All right, let's all rise for the open public hearing for the city of Ellsworth from Monday, May the thirteenth, twenty twenty four. Let's go and say the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic of America. Into the justice. All right, the reason for this public hearing is the ninety North Colorado Street condemnation here. Uh, it's the old mill, the big building. The old mill. Um, there's, yeah, it's the old mill.
Okay, uh, we originally opened the case on this back in twenty twenty three because of the property's overgrown needs and draxies. We sent a violation order, uh, registered mail. But the owners, uh, Robert, about Big Shawamaw, located in Phoenix or something, and did not get a response. Um, so. In January this year. We actually issued, when April the second this year, we issued a notice for this public hearing. The hearing then is to decide whether or not the old C K mill is, as we would define it, dangerous. So. The definition. Of that. And thank you all, pictures of it. Okay. Uh, danger structure, it's a structure which is unfit for human use. Or habitation, human conditions exist which are dangerous for injuries. Or which are potentially dangerous for injuries to the health, safety, or morally offensive to such or other residents of the city. Or which have. A blinding influence on properties in the area. Which such conditions may include, but shall not be limited to defects, recent fire hazard, accident. Lack of adequate ventilation or heating, severe fire damage, air pollution, microbatic sanitary facilities. The ones that we're looking at tonight are dilapidation, disrepair, structural defects, cleanliness. Uh, vermin infestation. Abandoned structures which are open and really accessible to children, transients, or others without vibrant diseases therein. Uh, we've done our best to secure that property with plywood over the windows, uh. When I went there the first time, uh, the door hinge had been taken off. The end of the screws on hinges. So, uh, I replaced those with some. Pork screws, make them work a little bit to get the end off anyway. And since then. These scopes still intact. Inside this place, it's, it's just nasty. It's. There's a lot of, uh, old elevator cable, there's reinforcing rod where they cut the tanks out inside. There is all kinds of ways to get. The staircases inside it, we have. And, uh, for some reason. Uh, Mr. Rocky Raffin likes to do his business on the steps of the strip. Home one, this place. So, we're pretty confident that Rocky. So, um, I did send a notice of registered mail in, and it was accepted. Uh, identifying the owners that are going to be hearing tonight. And. If not.
Have we had anything into the office? Uh, this question may be for Patrick. But if they're not responding to us now. It ought to be fenced in and stored, not access to anybody. But when we have a big event, so we're dangerous. They don't pay for it, not respond, they don't pay for it.
Well. Thank God you might have received. I think that, I think it would be appropriate to fence it in. Because we've condemned it, and it is dangerous. I mean, I think there, if I risk, then my, there's more risks than some threats for someone going into the nurses. Uh, what we would do, maybe take some measures like that, we'd assess against the action. We can't make them write that check to us, but we can assess against the property, which the problem with that is just getting used as a bait. We just end up spending good money to, to, to recognize. And then they might end up putting it. It's similar to what we did at the hospital. People are aware that it's, they shouldn't go in there.
Go to be cheap, that's the worst of fencing, then it'll be terrible.
Yes. And that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, this is a L C. Was this an L C or ownership?
Uh, this was an individual, well, it was listed under the man, Robert Klein, Bella Case Shawamaw. Was the name of the ownership. And it would take a small nuclear device.
Cost on just all. But we can't be held, as a city, we can't be held liable. We can recognize this public nuisance.
I, I don't think we have liability for, we didn't cause the problem, but we would be responsible to them. Now that we recognize it. It's supposed to be, it would be appropriate to do what we can. To, to at least make, clear visually if people should be. So that if trespassing. Still need to. Do the few things, maybe instead of fencing at all. Or at least barricading or something.
Any questions? No, thank you. Thank you, Stephen.
It's kind of motion. This is a public hearing. So it's. Public comment. Would the public like to comment on this? Would the public like to comment on this? Any public input? All right.
I can say something about it.
Yeah, come on up.
The building has been. And you know, you got some store offerings. Get it once and get in. And there's something to, something that they want to do now. Is our best, we're going to do it just like. And the city going to revert. Our fans is not, has not.
Anybody else like make a public comment? Anybody? Okay. I guess we've been motioned to close the public hearing.
I made a motion to close the public hearing.
All set. Reps has made a motion to close the public hearing. Counselor, uh, Panzer has seconded that motion, any discussion there, debate? All right, hearing now, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries, so the meeting is adjourned until five thirty. So we'll have the regular hearing, or the regular meeting at five thirty, so gives you a chance to go to the bathroom, you have about seven minutes.
Discussing the term. Maybe. This is our first time getting. I would, would, I would step to that to be watching the paper, sort of mess I have.
Hey, Patrick?
Yes.
On the next steps for this?
Yeah.
The next steps would be to do that, what's the next steps in the process again?
Yeah, the next step. As we, we were just discussing with Stephen Yeller, and they have a barricade, and. I mean, continue to try and see if we can get the owner to remediate it, or see if the city wants to pursue some other form of remediation.
So do, do we have to do an official condemnation?
We don't have.
If we want to get rid of some. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. What about? Who are you? Yeah.
It's just the. You want. Oh, this is. It's one of them.
And then, no.
I'm.
All right, let's all rise tonight. Uh, we're going to be regular council meetings in the city of Ellsworth for May the thirteenth, twenty twenty four, let's, let's just say the pledge again. I pledge allegiance to the flag. And to the state. And to the flag. On the issue. Into the justice. All right, the first item on our agenda, uh, consent amendment includes the approval of the April twenty sec, twenty second minute. And ordinance A zero one dash zero four two.
So you see, man, that. Tell it feel a bit. Plan one, this. Did. Okay. Okay, Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the April twenty two minutes. Uh, the care, maybe twenty second, and ordinance A one dash four two.
Council Bernard has made a motion to approve the consent agenda, rated twenty second. Council Hanson has seconded that motion, any debate, any discussion, concerns? All right, hearing now, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries. Uh, before we go on to petition the delegation, this is a moment where the public can speak for five minutes. You know, my apologies for our informal last meeting, I think we've all had our discussion, and we, we really do want to do a better job. Been a rough few months, and, uh, we've. You know, I think we've done fairly well, I've been on teams before that have actually done worse, so it's, it's, we're getting better, so just wanted to. Say that before we headed to petition the delegation, but this is a moment where, um, public comments can be made for five minutes, just let us know whether you're a city resident. And, uh, if the council has further questions. You're only debating go on for quite a while, until everybody's had enough time to answer, answer questions, and ask questions here on council, so. With that said, is there anybody who'd like to approach the council committee? Uh, one more time, Karen, why don't you come first?
Uh, there's three things I want. I want us to hope that we really stop using the foul language, that that will cease. And secondly, I seriously quote the narrow-minded young boy shaven. Calling people names and pointing fingers comes to an immediate. I hope these things are left outside the closed door, and we will once again become adults and properly run a meeting, whether we get what we want. Now, the third thing I want is, when are we going to put rails around the walkout there before somebody falls in the creek? It's talked about, but nothing is done. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Karen, very nice, Karen, thank you. Uh, I saw another man, yes, sir, come on up.
Uh, I'm Michelle Sturk, this is my husband Chad, we're business owners, um, we had talked to Justin previously, and he said that we needed to ask permission, so we would like to get your permission. To etch the city of Ellsworth logo, um, on cups. Um. Or, or any other.
Or, or something you could hang on a wall, it's like engraved with wood, and do a finish on it.
City's going to do a year.
Always. I don't see.
Thank you.
Yes. Do that since you own the logo.
Sure, sure.
I made a motion that we approve the use of our city logos, then. Only that at this time.
What's your company name again?
Twenty three seventy five, and Smokey Works.
Yeah. Council Panzer has made a motion to. Approve the motion to use our logo for justice business only, Council Bernard has seconded that motion. Any debate, any concerns with that? All right, hearing now, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, team carries. Uh, son, uh, son of the man. Who else wanted, yes, ma'am, uh, come on up, yeah. No, 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 I don't want to, never mind.
You did.
I'm muted.
I'm, I'm Jan Bontrager, I'm the executive director of the Pines Apartments, um, here in Ellsworth, it's low-income housing for seniors and disabled. Um, I have, uh, put in a request for a building permit. Um, we're redoing some concrete in our driveway that is becoming a safety hazard. Anyway, I'm requesting the, uh, permit fee to be waived, um, for our facility.
Did you win your fee in the past?
Yeah, it's non-profit, really.
Yeah, we're nonprofit.
Motion, you think it was based on. Doing business, as they can do.
Well, it's the Ellsworth Housing Authority doing business to find.
Who was the second? Uh, Council Panzer has been motion to approve, uh, waiving the, uh, was the, the.
The, the.
Which be.
Building permit.
Building permit fee. And Council Coats has seconded that motion to the Pines. Uh, any debate, any concern with that? None? Okay, hearing now, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, team carries.
And secondly, Mayor, then again, I apologize to you, as the executive director of the Pines, I have been there, like, in my duties to get you our twenty twenty five board member. Uh, I like her, so I will get that to you this week.
Got it, we'll knock it out.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else? Oh, we got, um, uh, Stacy, come on up.
Uh, Stacy Schmidt, for Ellsworth County. Um, two things, I wanted to just report briefly on a big thing. Um. If you don't know about that, I don't know what rock you're living under, but we hosted the big Kansas road trip, day second through fifth. And it's really hard to quantify, but anecdotally, it was, uh, hands, amazing success, we planted seeds for, um, don't know how many, how many. Against past this, um. Businesses did really well, a lot of our cultural attractions did exceptionally well because we had great weather. Uh, so I think it was a really great event, so I wanted to report on that, and then secondly, last time when I was here, I talked to you about biking across Kansas coming through on June eleventh. We have yet another opportunity, I don't need anything from you, but I just wanted to make you aware. K S N News will be here on June sixth, that's a Thursday, from one to two. Uh, we're going to extend it and do our celebration from one to three in the old USA parking lot, which is now where we're buying, opening, and doing sports. So I would encourage you all to put that on your calendar. Storm crapper team vehicles will be there, and we're going to just do a party, so. Yes, it's their Kansas road trip. Mm-hmm. And lots of great things happen.
I mean, who do you think will get the kids, and they have any idea? I don't know. And can you remind us how many people are taking the bike?
Seven hundred and fifty.
Are they actually going to have a good time, or are they going to get some minutes?
Biking across Kansas, we'll come through to. Yeah.
That's a good one.
Yeah. Yeah, they're having a good share. Thanks, guys.
Great job, Stacy, great job on the big Kansas road trip.
Thank you.
Yeah. True, all right. Star attraction, Matt Reedy.
Start.
Um.
Good evening.
All right.
I'll go ahead and start, sure, um, my name's Matthew A. Reedy. Not a resident of Ellsworth, but I do own a house here. Um. I took on responsibility for maintaining that house about twenty years ago. And the house was beaded over to me by my dad and my uncle. Fifteen years. And so twenty years I've been doing major, major construction on that house. Never made any attempt to fight any of that. But, uh, never. The city of Ellsworth ever, over the period of twenty years. And, uh, on Thursday, April twenty fifth. I was working on a shed that I'm building, down the old metal building, was building a new shed. And Delvin came to the place and told me that I needed to cease construction immediately, and then get a building. My bad, my ignorance, I had no idea, I needed a building permit or a property, because I've ever owned that, I really don't need permits. Do anything. So I immediately ceased, went to city hall, filled out the paperwork to the building permit. Um, went back home, started eating lunch, Delvin came back. And Delvin informed me in that conversation that. I needed to tear down five days' worth of framing work, construction, uh, immediately. That if I didn't, I'd be subject to a five hundred dollars per day fine for FEMA. And that my chances, because I'm in a flood zone, my chances of getting a building permit to build new construction on that property were just about zero. Now, I worked for government for four years, both in the military and as a civilian, if I'm correct. And I know a little bit of something about how government works, and that's not how it works. And so. Thursday evening, I started doing some research. And I knew that I needed a survey. Um, and I needed an absolute definite evaluation for my property. Have cousin by the name of Darren Hall, that's right there in the blue shirt, who's a surveyor down right there, so I called Darren. Darren agreed to come up following Saturday and survey my property. Meanwhile, I had sent an email to Mr. Finnegan, the mayor, and he called me on Saturday, twenty seventh. And I will say this about your mayor, he is extremely helpful. My recommendation to all of you is you hang on to him. He's helping. However. Your building administrator is not. So all the things that I was told by Delvin, Delvin, when he came back second time, said. Don't shoot the messenger. And commenced to give me a whole bunch of erroneous information. I spent hundreds and hundreds of dollars over the last three weeks. Getting to the point where I need his building permit based on this information. Because my property surveys at. Four feet over the base flood. Foundation. Therefore, it needs no FEMA waivers at all. Today, I finally got my. And as I say, it's hundreds of dollars. They have the survey done, bring it back and forth to Ellsworth. Um. And all based on a non-issue, it's never an issue. Now, if Mr. Stanbauer approached me and said, Mr. Reeding, we need to work this out. Met him tomorrow on Thursday night, twenty fifth. Set up a meeting with him Friday, more in eleven. He stuck his hand out, and I said. If I should shake your hand until after our meeting, more important, because of what I've been told. First words out of his mouth were. Well, I can tell you that you're not going to be building on that property. I've got my building permit. Today. If he, and he never contacted me over the last three weeks, not one time. Your mayor came up and watched the survey. He's been very helpful, not a word. From your city administration. Now. I come from a military background. You're, you always deal with people who are not trained. People who are not trained is something you need to understand, they're not trained, and they need to tell people they don't know what they're talking about. Rather than giving erroneous information that causes harm, because what happened to me? I don't know how it's possible that you could have a city administrator. Who's been on the job for two years, when one-third of the city of Ellsworth is covered by a flood zone, and he knows nothing. About FEMA floods, or the process for getting waived. Very concerning.
The benefit of that is, if I remember correctly, when this all happened. Didn't you contact FEMA and ask them the direction? didn't you contact FEMA and ask them the direction that you're supposed to be taking on this?
Yes.
And you did exactly what FEMA told you to do.
And what our ordinance.
And what our ordinance says. So we're coming up here in bad mouth and we're in, in your alley.
Well, don't, really, if you finish, I get your child. Maybe you'll get some information, maybe you'll just talk today. And instead of if he called me up at any time and said, Matt, did you come into city hall before today, I never talked to anybody? I've been in that down city hall three or four times in the last three weeks.
Is that true?
I talked to the ladies down there this morning.
Yeah, they
And I said, this, this could get ugly tonight, you might wanna have Dustin call me.
They all said
Haven't heard a peep from.
They all said you were pretty rude to them and you would
Right, I agree right then.
Yep.
Just like anyway, I You might be rude too, if you were fed a bunch of erroneous information that cost you hundreds and hundreds of dollars, Don. And as for a non-issue, it wasn't how long does Ellsworth have to be in a flood zone before the city understands how to handle issues like new construction in a flood zone? Because they clearly know nothing. It costs me hundreds of dollars. I don't know how you feel about that, if that happens to you, but to me, money is kind of important.
Uh, I still think Dustin has not evolved on this because he called FEMA and he was instructed by FEMA and our city ordinance.
Okay, okay.
Let me, let me explain something. Sorry, Dan, I can't hear.
No, it's been said in the office. Totally different.
Permission.
Okay.
So hey, that's like Dustin's statement about
Sure, so a couple of things, one, um, I, the mayor contacted and the mayor's emailed me. Yes. I emailed you. Yes. Said, do you mind, what should I do? He said, go ahead and talk, go ahead and call us, I'm hidden. Has he reached out to you?
Correct.
So yeah. And he had Darren Hall reach out to me, and Darren Hall and I have been in contact for this issue too. In fifty, article three, chapter fifteen dot twelve of ordinance three thousand one passed in June twenty-second, two thousand nine, which is approved by the Department of Agriculture, who also issues NFIP, who is also certified by the National Flood Insurance Program, states this. A floodplain development permit. A floodplain development permit shall be required for all proposed construction or other development, including the placement of manufactured homes in the areas in sections fifteen dot twelve dot zero four, zero four zero. No person, firm, corporation, or unit of government shall initiate any development or substantial improvement or cause the same to be done without first obtaining a separate floodplain or a development permit for each structure or other development.
Not if you're one foot over the base flood elevation.
And that was not determined, Mr. Rainey, until you got your survey, because according to the current map says two thousand nine, your property is in the floodplain development.
Yeah, absolutely, and you can stand on my property, which you were on, but you were on on Saturday, the twenty-seventh, when you came over to clean up Thelma's property and you crossed over my property. I have another survey, I'm cutting down. But
Excuse me, Mr. Rainey, that is not the issue at hand right now, is the trespassing. You're on here for the
What kind of a city, a business, a city administrator doesn't know where a property line is when he comes in to do work like that? That's my point here.
Right, but the point is you were not on here for the trespassing, you were on here for the
Okay.
And all that.
My gosh. It's like, you said. If I, yes, I'll take the summer. Heard of Ben Finnegan? Three weeks ago. I never heard it. I didn't Dustin Stanbauer. Now, one of those people I'm glad to have met. Just because of things like this, look, I'm a not a resident of Ellsworth, I spend a lot of money here, spend a lot of time here, I have family here. And you cost me, and it, for the first time in twenty years, you've cost me a tremendous amount of money over what was a non-issue to start with. But you don't see that that's wrong?
No.
If, if he would call me up at any time over the last three weeks, I told Mr. Finnegan, Mayor Finnegan this. If, I, I, a lot of people in my walking career, Finnegan, never enjoyed it. Never. I'm tired. Looking forward to never having to have anything to do with that again. Yeah. Well, you've heard my
So I got emailed, Mr. Darren Hall.
He's gonna cost him a lot of money or something. Thank you, man.
Appreciate it. Couple of things from city council, and I have been in the biking classes, and I'm following the ordinance. If you, if you, if you check the two thousand nine approved FEMA maps, twenty-four south flank, India is currently in the floods. He is in an AE flood zone that is devenable. So if that is the case, he is required, it is required that this individual, whoever wants to build, has to submit a floodplain permit application. And is at that point when you submit your application, that you have the, that you, we get the surveyor and you actually are able to ascertain whether it's in the floodplain. In this particular case, when he got a professional survey, which is not me, it is part of the requirements of the floodplain permit that he actually gets an architect, surveyor, or engineer to actually sit, do the, to evaluate the property. And when he did that, he found that it was three feet above the floodplain.
Four.
Four, thank you. And when I saw that by someone who is a licensed professional surveyor, then I am, have fulfilled the FEMA requirement to sign off on. But I will not do that until that is done. And so what's gonna happen now, based on Mr. Hall and I's email conversation this morning? Now, he's gonna do what's called an L O M R, or an L O M A, a letter of map revision. And what that does is that, that means that FEMA, over the next thirty or sixty days, based on his professional opinion along with this conversation with this state department of water, division of water resources, they have both signed off on the fact that it is four feet above, and from moving forward, his property will no longer be in blue. But it has, but he has to go through that process, because as of two thousand nine, his property was in there. So the way that FEMA, if we want to continue to participate in the National Flood Insurance Program, we have to adhere to what they and that is every person who wants to build in a floodplain, I look at the map, I look at the address, it's in blue, they have to build a floodplain permit. So I can work with, if, if, I, I, I can work with Delvin on the other stuff. You know, but the fact is, is he was right, and the fact is, is he was built when we didn't know. So what Delvin did was right, I can work with him on
By the way, I have no issue with anything, Delvin.
And I have a job to do, I know what the code says, I've sent it to you. And I executed exactly what it instructed me to do, and once he filled out his permit, once he got his surveyor to submit to me the facts, then I changed it and signed off on it. But what kind of administrator would I be? If I, I don't follow the law? Or U C M J?
Not the law.
Yes, it is.
Right there.
Well, I, I And I'm required to fault.
Okay, I, let me interject, I gave council an opportunity for special meeting for this reason. And here we are battling it out in a little five-minute window, so, you know, we really needed more time and that was the, so this is where we are, so. Why don't we wrap it up? And, um, is that okay? Because we're gonna have Darren Hall, he can go through the time, is that okay with you, Mr. Rainey?
Sure.
Okay, uh, anybody else, petitions, delegations? No one else? Okay. Um, unfinished business, uh, water restriction, discussion, and decision. Agenda item report twenty-four dash zero seventy-three. Um, what here, I'm sure. Council has a lot of signatures. Yeah.
I don't think it's worth getting one of the words, we're better.
I agree, I agree.
Yeah.
Move on.
Good.
Yeah. Alright, move on. New business, Mary Schmidt, this is the city cemetery, do you wanna come on, Mary?
I have.
Hold on, my
teacher.
So yeah, muddy water, discussion, what did I skip over there?
Uh, the water.
Oh, okay. Okay.
I was trying to bone and we weren't there.
Well, uh, you know, permission, I have a, mayor permission to school.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Um, I, I am bringing this before the city's council, for two reasons, city council for two reasons. One, uh, the splash pad is about to open up soon, and we've got some issues with that, I think, or something under, under one of the fixtures, but more importantly than that, I'm concerned about our water levels. Um, if you look at some of the, uh, graphs that I've sent you from the United States Geological Survey, as well as the drought monitor, they, they had about March time rain, they were reducing our drought with our drought level. And then because of two months of very minimal rain, um, it's back up to G two, it's gonna be a rough summer, the storms are still passing over us, even with the rain today. We've gained about two or three cubic feet per second on the river, which is nothing when you've got the minimum, uh, they call it M D S, minimum desired flow. Uh, this is supposed to be around thirty-five in the month of May, it's based on years of data that the state of Kansas has collected. Um, other cities like Russell have been in water restrictions since last year. Uh, it's, I'm just bringing it for you again, because going getting into the season, everyone wants the water that wants and stuff, and I'm really concerned about our water levels. And I, the projections based on everyone I've talked to is not gonna get any better. So, uh, I'm just, the, the resolution is just a bare bones resolution that you actually have to tell me what kind of restrictions you want. As per the, the regulations I sent you, they gave us a bunch of options, I also had twelve suggestions of my own, just brainstorming, but it's really up to this board how you want me to handle it. If, uh, but I do, I'm concerned about our water levels, I do. We should, we should handle it responsibly. Because the other option is um, it would just be that, we're taking it.
Didn't the state shut, the market business of state, you know, or
Uh, the state, the state sent me a letter, uh, shutting down use of all these.
That way?
Yeah.
What are some of the water restrictions that they suggest?
Well, uh, when we had that conversation last year, I know that several would be like, the idea of just doing what we did before was just, um, we have to update the resolution to reflect that, I can only badger on that, but there's other options. Um, the mayor and Dan, and I tried to do some, Dan and I tried to do some things last year to keep this splashback closed. And that is not a problem with this, it's so
Yeah, we can. Because we did like an, we'd have to be like Thursday to Sunday.
Yeah, and we got suspended now from last year, so we can adjust this.
Time is on, you're being fun, but if it was like to be for windy days.
Yeah.
So do we need to figure out about this leak before we go?
Yes, we're concerned about the leak.
Have you guys like worked it all to figure out?
Didn't, uh, you could want us to have, but to prepare this, nothing on that panel?
Yes.
Yeah. So we'll contact, have a seat about noon.
We just hold off on, watch, watch.
Tell us, prepare them. There is a waste of water, we just keep it, they got underneath.
Yes, that's probably not a possible, but a lot last year, and I don't think we ever did it. No, that's, I can definitely, I'll put it at the top of this.
I was
I think the biggest thing is the final waiting for so I would say, yeah, I, I would say until we figure out yeah.
We're gonna have my crew get on.
And I would say one of the we track them up until Friday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Saturday on water, like water usage.
For a whole town.
No, of course not.
That's what she did before. Well, we do that.
Not that, sorry, except for you.
Isn't that enough, we need to, what, what does states do? They do it every year.
It pays pretty much, just says you're not watering, period.
Yeah, but they're, they're almost
Because they're on the offer, they show water, so they just say you're not watering, period.
I was along when he got it, of course, so he should, and try to
Why doesn't it mean that they're gonna get letters that
Yeah, you, yeah. Do you wanna, you know, you know, that's what I understand.
Yeah, I was wondering if we could do it like seven, yeah, seven A M, two, kind of, not during the sessions. Yeah. So it was like, even addresses were like, do you have any water on Monday, Wednesday, Friday?
So odd addresses.
Either one, and then even would do Tuesday, Thursday, and then there were
Somebody knows, certainly knows on Tuesday, Thursday, day they have.
Yeah, we send out letters of water. Where you can, and we turn on Facebook.
Somebody doesn't do that.
So, seven P M, seven A M.
I do want to try to yeah, I can say that they, I can do, yeah.
Is anyone in driving, other than the rear driver?
Sure.
Uh, we would still find out maintaining a normal schedule of golf courses, right, because you've got hundreds of thousands of dollars in this.
I, I was gonna come to you for guidance.
I don't know.
So
Which I mean, it's still
So leave the golf course alone.
Make sure that Patrick knows to use minimum water.
He's pretty, he's pretty good about we're actually trying to observe what we can at night. We're working on, the plans have actually increased capacity in the golf course to take more, to break
The, the rice, the food, you can see a lot more people, but the gardens, they can do same rules and doing this, plus there can be water in there, and the pot, I mean, they exhaust their benefits. Okay.
So just to make sure I get this right, so did you, is, did you want me to, are you preapproving me to run the, that Patrick and I to write the resolution with these restrictions, so let me make sure I get it right, so. Um, seven P M, seven A M is what ideal watering times. And then odd addresses, Monday, Wednesday, Friday, even addresses Tuesday, Thursday, Saturday.
Yeah.
And then leave the golf course alone because of the investments.
Yeah.
And no splash pad until the mayor, please.
Day, still later. Can you put in or somebody?
That's very good. So, but So what happened to these, so I live in an even number? When does somebody catch me? Watering on the wrong date, like would the steam go out, stop on hand, like?
Um, I believe.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't know where all this is. I'm terrible for my
Like some rogue, it's like what, right, but I
The city, please ask me, is there a fine for people who violate this?
Has there been in the past?
Mr. Brad, do you remember? No?
I know. It says
Sure, kind of important to do.
Well, um, this, uh, it's in the eight dot twenty-four itself. It says violations of this chapter shall be a municipal offense and may be prosecuted in municipal court. Any person so charged and have gone guilty in municipal or violating the provisions of this chapter shall be guilty of a municipal offense, each day's violation shall constitute separate offense. The penalty for an initial violation shall be a mandatory fine of one hundred dollars. In addition, such customer may be required by the court to serve a definitive term of confinement in the city or county jail. Uh, up to thirty days. Penalty for a second or subsequent conviction is two hundred dollars, in addition, such customer shall serve a definitive term of confinement, not to exceed the due date.
How about if we didn't complain, we were
That's ten, uh, so, uh, so in terms of enforcement, um, give a warning first.
I just gotta
There is, I don't know if you want low water?
Yeah, well, it's the state guys, you're violation.
Yeah, we don't, we don't have any current regulations.
Okay.
I just thought it should be brought up, because he knows, maybe it says
Someone's gonna say something with the issue, okay?
So, uh, you authorize, you author, so living in the straight, you are authorizing Patrick and I to, uh, work with the resolution, I think it's twenty twenty-four dash twelve, with the addition of seven A M to seven P M, excuse me, seven P M to seven A M ideal watering times. Odd addresses, Monday, Wednesday, Friday, even addresses Tuesday, Thursday, Saturday, no water on Sundays, leave the golf courts alone, no splash pad until um, Um, uh, we may, we may.
And I would say some of the planes are. Be it all.
Give warning first, in terms of enforcement, give warning first and then, um, and then, uh, verify. Uh, it's all water, prior to, prior to warning or slash.
Yeah.
Seven? Yes, sir.
More for the public than for the council. The difference between now and the last time this happened is the city has the technology to know who's using water, so more for the public. We will, when the city can look and see who's using water when they're not there on the wrong day.
No, I've, I've requesting a motion to authorize twenty twelve, twenty four with the. Amendments or the restrictions that you want to.
So would this be effective then? Would it have to be effective next meeting for us review or?
Um, that's your call, I do that, let me make sure there's no publication requirements, it's a declaration of a water warning. Yeah, it has to, it doesn't become effective, so you authored it. It's how you want me to do it, if you want me to, if you want us to present the next meeting or interest us to pass it and what. The, what the resolution says, it's in order, the resolution declaring in the beginning of our watch, water warning shall be effective upon the publication. So I will, I will.
So we're writing the motion that we, uh. Add the addendum items to twenty twelve dash twenty four for water restriction and then Patrick. Down in, uh, and sign off on it and.
Alright, Council Hanson has made a motion to approve the addendums to the water restriction, uh. It's the A I R dash point four dash zero seventy, that are eight, seventy eight. And Councilor Coats has seconded that motion, um, pending, you know, Patrick and Dustin's, uh, additions and, uh. Edits, any debate, any concerns with this? Okay.
I'm not comfortable with that, plus the mayor also. I'm just a staff member and I would like someone to be out, I think it would be appropriate for the mayor. I think I'll do what, I think I understand what the council wants, it's more for me to make sure that the mayor actually also agrees with this, his presentation can be done.
For this whole thing.
Yes, because we're, we're staff. Yeah, I think I know what you wanted, but I was like, the, the mayor or someone from the council to actually sign up.
Sure, definitely do that. Okay, yeah, got you, okay. Alright, hearing the halls, favor say out.
Bye.
Closed. Alright, carries. Uh, next item, new business, Mary Schmidt to discuss city cemeteries.
Mary, before you end up, I have a question. Have you been to city hall and talked with the city girls about cemetery concerns? Even in the city hall and talk with them?
Yeah.
Okay, have you made any, where did you spend, make phone calls with your? In this resolve? When did you spend?
She has to be added to the agenda.
Um.
We spoke and we talked about why.
Oh, okay, well, so you went through the whole process of changes, you need your advice, so is that true?
No, she just wanted to meet with this and.
Oh, there's a chip.
And then he gets lost, she.
We talk, we, that's my talk. Hey, I'm stressed against. Do you think? Really, it shouldn't be brought up to the mayor's business because he did all procedures, he will do most investment, but I guess we'll make an exception this time. But I don't wanna get this tight, just to start, I can just about do this without having gone through the. Yes, does that mean, there, Mary?
I'm able to say my piece and I will.
Yeah, you're not saying your piece tonight, I'm just saying, everybody needs to go through the files.
And I would like it without any. I want to do it without. Oh. Now I can have.
That's all.
Yeah.
Alright. So I do have a concern and it's going to take. Working together. To have this actually. Okay. The city of Eldred has two cemeteries. One across the room. Not very many people are buried here. It's about, we have a newer one. That's added on to. People have donated areas. Especially for one year. I don't know, maybe. They were donated and. And another person bought. But they don't have a deed, oh, it has this, we're saying, okay, this is what you bought, no measurement. There's no survey. There's no, we have a survey. But this cemetery is grown. And that's where the problem is, with having it grown. We don't have a perfect survey, we need to have a survey. So they didn't have a deed because that's what people, uh, not. People from the other cemetery, there's a lot of people. Using this newer one. They want a deed and they can't do that without a survey, it was surveyed initially. But it's not been surveyed since it's had additions. Additionally. It is not just everybody in the city. This is something that also falls under the city of Eldred being the county seat. It goes for. City of Canopus has the same problem. They have. Their cemetery was surveyed. But the additions have not been done, they don't know where to go, they don't know what to do and how to start. But there's what needs to be done to correct all that and to get what needs to be done, done. Because. They're looking at Els. Because we are the county seat. To compound things for. There are also township cemeteries. Not all township cemeteries have a problem. From here. They have a big. When it was first started, that cemetery was. Mapped out. It's had multiple additions. Multiple. All people received was a piece of paper, they did not receive a deed because it was not served. It has not been surveyed, it needs to be surveyed, all of the new records. On top of which. They're looking. Back to Els because we are the city of Els and the county seat. So everything goes back to Elswood and what Elswood does is what the others want to follow suit with. Why am I the one that's talking about this? They're children. I want to be there the next. Places that I bought, but I can't get deeds and I can't get the time, already do anything, so I need city attorney. To be able to talk to county attorney, everybody has to work together for this to come together. Okay? I already have had persons, one person, a family. That approached into my area. Leaving me shorted because I have to be, because it has not been surveyed. So this is where we're at. They haven't, you guys all have to work together, and that includes the city. The mayor, the city, county, everybody has to work together and talk together to get this done. I will be very near my children. That's all I have to say. Do you have any questions you can ask them?
He's gonna provide. So of the last year. Mandy actually has, and Delvin. Have actually been surveying all of it, because we made and have records digitized, we have audited our records. And so what she has been working on, along with the high school intern that came to help us, has been working on digitizing everywhere. What is involved with it, we take every card that is, you're talking about. We have to go through and make sure we, Delvin has to go up. He has physically looking where it's at, just to verify that what we have written on the card is. Um, we've got, what letter are you on now? S, so that's, we've made a lot of effort in auditing our records and auditing the locations, number one, number two. Um, we already know about the problems you're having at the court. We have got, Delvin, you've gotten three surveys now, and we just got a third one executed. Where we're getting those series done, actually this week, what it's happened, it was just a convenience in council, because we were already working. What kind of, um. We have already been working on.
Okay. But I haven't, we haven't seen anything on the newspaper. Anything, and I've been reading everything, babe.
I appreciate that, the reason being is that nobody's asked, you're the first person to bring it up, but we knew it was an issue.
People talk about it all over, wherever they're living. But maybe.
I'm sorry.
To come up and speak, but I have no problem speaking. I don't. There's speech or anything, I just talk.
But I, 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 we are making.
Okay, so, but how's that gonna work that? The county attorney who doesn't want to be reachable. And that's a known thing, that's been, we all know how unreachable that be. That he can be, so how's it gonna work? For everybody else to try to figure out how they're going to do it, whether it's a city of Canopus. Or a Carnero cemetery or. Any cemetery, I'm not, Cemeteries had this problem, okay, but I may not have any problems. There are also smaller cemeteries that are just families. That's not a problem, they don't need to be surveyed.
I don't know, but we can work together, we can work, we'll start by fixing ourselves and we can work with that. I don't disagree with you.
I. That's what I'm wanting, is I'm wanting everybody to work together and to talk and unfortunately, we have a person at Carnero. On the township. Who does not deal well with hearing things from other people, so. Everyone, we need help, doesn't have to be done.
I wish you would have talked. I will work. I, I will help you with your, if you come see us too. We will help you, she's. What's that?
I have appointments for.
Whenever you.
And there is for Westworth, I agree with you one hundred percent. Yes.
Why?
Because I don't have the fear of falling, involving her very, I'm gonna hear. I'm gonna go to the old cemetery especially, and a grave, they did grave here, it's what it says, even they down and hit another person's fault. So you move on. It shouldn't, that should not.
There's not faults everywhere.
No, that's what.
There's not faults.
That's what I mean, you get a vault, what says you don't, deed and another person's right and up.
That's just it, I don't even stand, put it into my area, my name, that's a box.
Yeah.
Years of.
I've seen it. The years have been.
My first born, does not have a fault. Wasn't even known, he was buried because of the way my mother did it. Hey, he just sitting in the box and he was back home. There's clearly been none. We might not say that. He was buried next to him. Also about.
Is that in the city cemetery?
No, this is actually in Carnero.
Oh, I get error.
But you, you have to understand, you have to have the city and the county as a county, the city of the county seat, everybody has to work together. And that includes townships. That's what I'm trying, that's what I'm getting at here, it all has to be done together. I've spoken to certain people who want deeds for their properties in the middle. I have not had anyone. Ask me about anything about the.
See, my wife is in the same situation, forty years ago, when we moved here, we bought our spaces in. Now people are in age now that the spaces are buying at the new cemetery. So they're gonna donate ours at the. Deed people that don't. By new stakes, new cemetery.
How are you donating about a deed?
Cause it's on the map, city maps, county laws that they're working on right now.
She has, she has a point. We ran into this issue when we tried to plot stuff with the county and we, that's exactly what she, she's. She is.
Deed of mine, what I bought, because I want to be able to put it into a trust or put it into my. So that my son won't have, because otherwise it would stand right now. If he die. First back to them here. Well, then, we really need a deed to sell.
So that, this is the way, the way they have been, it's an important topic. Uh, actually, it's a fifteen dash ten oh two. Says, says the third class don't have news deeds, we can keep our own records, we have to survey what the cemetery is, and we have to keep good records, so I'm not saying. We don't have to keep very big records of it, but we are allowed to transfer them by, we can keep our own records, and they're transferable at the city office down there, that's the way Eldred has always said. So. A lot of them not try to, it's all important topics, but we don't have the expense of surveying everything. It's a, it's a choice the city could make, um, but we can also do it. But we do, we have to survey, make sure we have it, we don't have to file the registry deeds, we can keep our own records if that's what we choose to do, you know, have to make the deed. I think it's something that's market, that it was, I would like to get to with Brian Parsons, maybe, and anyone else who's knowledgeable about this, to make sure, you know. Figure out, in the city section, if it's still going, and just make sure we're all up.
It needs to trickle down to everybody in the county.
Well, you know, the thing is, it's interesting is there's township cemetery, like you said, and every city is in charge of their own cemetery, and the townships sometimes have cemeteries and some churches do. And we can't tell them what they have to do, they don't have to make their own choices.
The city of Eldred is the county seat.
Yes, but we still don't have the ability to tell them how to run their sentence.
No, but you have to work with the county and between you, you can help, people who don't, aren't doing quite such a good job. You can't. And if that's the county attorney that will actually be reachable, he can also stand with us. But there, yeah, he has to be reachable. And he doesn't want to be, last time I was in the office. The secretary said, no, I'll tell him what you want, give him the paperwork, can't tell you that he's gonna read it. He doesn't want to give out three ed marks.
All I can, all I have.
Quote marks.
Yes, all I, all I, all I have jurisdiction based on this board is a wrong. So what I can tell.
Work with everybody else.
I have to take care of us first and our cemetery records need to be fixed first, and I'm gonna tell you. We are fixing it, she is on letter S and I've got a survey that's already.
Hello, the plane doesn't have the one to work.
Yes.
It is, I got the one to work, that's the whole key, that's why, is why I was saying in the first place, there are deeds that's worked together for this specific ones work.
Sounds good.
Very good, thank you, Mary.
Thank you.
Good thinking, awesome project. Alright, next item on our agenda will be Darren Hall to discuss the national plot. Come on up, Darren. Got a haircut since it's silent.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, I think Darren Hall, a licensed surveyor with the state of Kansas, um, been surveying like three, three years now, um. As everybody knows, I was contacted by Mr. Rainey to assist him in getting a floodplain development permit. Uh. Completed so that he could continue with constructing another new tool. In the process, I met Mr. Finnegan, or Mayor Finnegan, he asked me to come tonight. Don't necessarily have an agenda to present to you, um, but we thought there might be some questions that you might have as far as. How the process works or what needs to be done, um. So does anybody have any questions necessarily about the process that's involved, or do you even care about the process? And I don't mean that from a negative standpoint, you, you don't necessarily. Need to know, but, um, that's why we have a city administrator, is all of us get a figure.
Right, okay.
Um, so you guys basically got to work out the best, this time.
Yes.
Yes, we have this.
That gave me exactly what I needed and the information I needed, it was four feet of base flood elevation, there was a base flood elevation certificate. Along with floodplain, uh, application slash permit, and we got it done.
Oh, good. They were sent. Yes, that particular. Situation is taken here, um. Like I say, I don't necessarily have. An agenda, so to speak, um, I deal with this stuff all the time, uh. The floodplain is a very complicated situation, um. And the majority of the public is ignorant. What you have to do in order to develop. Because it's, it's just tough to get it out there, you know, you can send out. Newsletters, you can publish in the paper, but if people don't read them or if they get a newsletter and throw the trash, then. But you know, that doesn't help the situation any.
So do they not update the maps anymore like that?
Uh. There are a lot of counties in the state of Kansas right now that, uh, the state division of water resources is working on updating. Um. Typical government takes years to get it done. It takes a lot of money to get it done. Um. Which I will touch on from the standpoint, the reason that FEMA allows letters of map amendment. Is because their mapping is not perfect and they know that, they acknowledge that. Um, so like in this situation here, uh, I came out, I did an elevation survey at the property. Uh. The elevations justify submitting an application to FEMA. Those applications are free other than the cost of the survey. Um, I take forty five to sixty days, oftentimes eighty or ninety, depending on how back the subcontractors are because FEMA does not. Process the application themselves and subcontract that happens on private survey. Or uh, engineering. Um. So any residents that you have that are currently in the floodplain, I was somewhat shocked that the elevations were as high as they are. Um, I normally deal with a couple inches on up to maybe a foot above base flood elevation for these homes that I can get removed. Um, but. And I, and I'm not here trying to, to pinch the company that I work for, but if you, if there's any way you can get that out to the public, the people that are paying flood insurance. Say, hey, it might be worth, you know, spending a few hundred dollars to get surveyed now to see if you need to pay the, the insurance or see if you can get removed. Uh, one thing that I. That is a misconception all over the state of Kansas. If you're in the floodplain, you have to have flood insurance. That's not the case. The only time. The only two situations that you have to have flood insurance is if number one, you have federally backed loan through your bank. Or if you have a bank that requires it because you're in the floodplain. And then at that point, you can get an elevation certificate. To submit to the insurance company to show that you are, um, your chance of flooding is. Low.
Mary, if you don't. I, we, we are unusual in terms of recommending services, but our development office. They are right behind you would be, if you would be, if you wanted to sit and put them in a connect potential.
Yeah, like I say, I'm not here trying to sell my company. I'm just.
Uh, well, it would, it would be nice to have options.
Sure. Um, I've got two sitting on my desk, but I like it right now. Cemeteries are definitely a bogged up when it comes to real estate. They don't. They're not like a subdivision where you buy a lot and you get issued a deed, title insurance and all that. Um, most of the cemeteries I deal with are set up just like what was discussed here tonight. You go in, you've been got your spot. You pay for it and you get a receipt. Um, which I'm not here talking.
I, so I think, I think that'll be answered. So if FEMA says you're in the floodplain. The only way to get out is to have a survey to prove it's not. And so the survey is specific to, even if your neighbor gets their certificate, you still have a survey your own. And you can't really eyeball it just so. So really, if someone wanted to make an application to build something in the floodplain, they're gonna have to get served. To follow the FEMA.
I think you're Mr. Rainey.
Do I ask a question?
Go ahead.
After many years as this. Flood plan, flood plain floods on the. Not that many houses fall in the flood. Dozen, two dozen. I think the city, the city, the city had a survey.
No, no.
Do that.
Wondering why the city hasn't long ago surveyed the survey. Home.
Well, they. So. You gotta be mindful.
They're changing. Well, I didn't go to my house and survey my property when I bought it and they didn't do that either.
It's the individual property on. And number two, and number two, the only way we're able to verify is you go to the state's map, which is what I was trained on by FEMA. You go to the state's map, which you've included in your packet and it has the address. And if your address falls in blue, I am required, if we want to continue to participate in the national flood insurance program. We have to make you do a, an, an, an application permit. And then through the process of permit, you get your, you get your surveyor and then you get taken out. That's it.
That was the little bit of ways to do it.
Yes.
This is what's called a permit. They get some on big sheets of paper and then they went digital, so now it's gonna have them. Thirty six by forty eight sheet. Um, you, you also have an area photo of the, this underlay underneath the base flood elevation lines. So what I did is I go to this website, I type in the address, it drops in on the address, with the photo, I verify, yes, this is the correct address. And then I use these squiggly lines to calculate the base flood. Now, in this case, because there was a flood insurance study done. They have these solid lines, which you probably can't see it, but I drew bear up between them. Those are the cross section plates. If you have cross sections, that's. What you use to interpolate the elevation. So I get out my little scale, I measure between those lines, I subtract the elevation difference, divide that distance into it. Then I measure from that known line up to that pin. Do a little math and it gives me a base flood elevation. It isn't perfect. So like in this particular case here, I added two tenths to what I calculated to make sure that we were higher. I like to do that as just insurance.
Uh, I'm not so sure, but isn't city hall in the book?
Uh, not on the current one, but on the, as since the, the, they had, they submitted a draft map last year. And the draft map had all of them, pretty much most of them.
So they're expanding, yes.
Yes, but one thing that John had helped me with. And Josh Pickman is they helped me submit the. Chris Park stuff to FEMA because it did, their draft map did not account for the detention areas. So I'm waiting for, I'm waiting for the update to see how much of it affect those two.
Now, one thing I always tell my clients, um, I submitted a letter of map amendment. FEMA removed you from the floodplain. Doesn't mean that you're never gonna flood. You still could. We could have a five hundred year flood or a thousand year flood, which they don't reach, refer to it as years anymore because that's very deceiving. Um, they usually have a hundred year, five hundred year, very few places. Uh. Would you find a thousand? It wasn't a few places. Well. We'd hit a, a period of lot rain here every year and for four years in a row, it's gonna be a five hundred year flood. People say, well, that's three and five hundred. So they, they got away from using years. How they use a percent, two percent chance, half percent chance. Um. But just, and I tell people, just because this property is technically remote based on elevation and mathematics. That doesn't mean there's force field around your property. It's been, you know, water can arise, you can stand there and watch it like this one on the window. Um, I've had a number of these over the last thirty years and all darned, six months later, people didn't have water. And you're going to wind down, I'm getting a phone call. Sunday morning at eight o'clock saying, hey, you said I never flooded. No, I didn't say that. Um, I just said you don't have to pay flood insurance. Because that's what this whole lot of insurance, it's not. A guarantee that you're not gonna flood or you're not gonna have a flooding event. Um.
So there's three arms that says national flood insurance program. But there's also the other side of this too. There's the development requirements. They, they are also required that it was passed in the ordinance back in two thousand nine. And those floodplain development requirements are in addition to the regular requirements for a particular zone that weren't referenced to. So let's say he wasn't building an accessory structure, or let's say he was building a house. There is multiple requirements that have to be met and approved by an engineer or an architect in order for them to build that. Non-accessory structure inside the floodplain. It's almost like similar to having a house.
Yeah, even, even if you're gonna. If you're gonna build a home in a floodplain and you're gonna pay for it cash out of pocket, no loan. If your county or your city participates. You still have to go through the process. Because the theory being, there, like Dustin said, it's not just insurance, it's also what I do here affects people upstream and affects people downstream. If you're in what is called a floodway, and this is a floodplain on a floodway. We have to go out and do what they call a no rise. The easiest way to explain no rise is if I take a glass and I fill three fourths full of water. And I put a mark on the side of the glass and I drop an ice cube in it, that water level's gonna rise because that ice cube is taking up volume in that water. And so that's what we call a no rise. In order to develop in the, in the floodway, you have to prove no rise. Theoretically, you can't because if you carry your numbers out far enough past your decimal point. Uh, it's gonna show that there's rise. Now. Uh, the state of Kansas division of water resources, uh, Janelle Phillips, she reviews those. And she's got a lot of common sense and when she gets three places out past the decimal point, she says, all right, you're putting a tool shed in the flood. She told me one time. It's like a mouse farting in the wind. You're never gonna help. Part of my life, that's, that was thrown words to me. You're never gonna know that, that tool shed was built. Now, if you go and build that. A flood rush or, you know, some. Million square foot building in a floodway, it's gonna cause the water to rise, which means it's gonna back it up upstream and it's gonna obviously lead you down. Um, so that's, you know.
So Darren, I just got a point, just jump in because I actually have a different municipal plan where tomorrow I have a phone call in the US Department of Ag because somebody did exactly that. The US Department of Ag wants that client to co-see that person that basically have to tear down a substantial building, but it's in the floodway. It didn't get a permit. And, and that's how seriously the state of Kansas takes that. So. While it is mostly about insurance, like it really is. Like the state's gonna make us get involved to actually make this person tear down a substantial bill because they went without a permit, they didn't get the survey done because it's a no rise. They, they probably wouldn't be able to prove anything. But we gave them that option. So I just, Susan's topical, I check and watch. It's a, it is a real thing. It's very, you know, I talked with very big management. You don't report before I look back. We've had people tear things down because they didn't. Do it right. Not very often we try to, I'm just saying.
So in other words, Dustin was actually doing a job.
Yeah, I mean, he's all about what was, what was in the book, um. And I'm not, I'm not here to judge, you know, but I need to know about that. I highly recommend, I am not a CFM, my job doesn't require it because I don't manage floodplains. I'm an expert major, that's the definition that's stood there. Measure distances, I measure angles, I measure elevations. I called Janelle Phillips and Cheyenne Sun Eagle at the state of Kansas. After Mr. Rainey contacted me, I called you. What does the city of Ellsworth require? Because I can't read every city's ordinance that I work in because my company has seven offices in the state of Kansas. We work all over the place. So when I get a phone call from a client, I call this the CFM for the county or the city, say, hey, what do you require? They email me word docs, PDFs, uh, the ordinance. Um, and then I just start filling in one of those. Um. I know a lot about it. But I don't claim to be an expert because I don't know everything.
One thing you impressed upon me and that was important is that. The more of this we do, Dustin and, you know, Matt and Darren, that if we do get flooded, right, we'll pull the burden building permits, right? To see that this has been done, correct? Am I right?
They could. FEMA has the right to participate in the national flood insurance program to come in and audit your building permits. And. But it's like I said, I was telling Dustin and he, he already knew. If I build a house, it's not in a floodplain and I don't put hurricane to lips and if I don't know other things that's required in the building code. There's a flood in Ellsworth, FEMA can say, sorry, you're not following. Building code set up by FEMA. So we're not gonna give you flood. Flood site happen if tornado comes in, wipes out Ellsworth and they come in and they audit your books and find out that you're not. Following the floodplain requirements, they can say, we're not gonna give you any federal money for a tornado. Um, and that's that way with any natural disasters, typically floods, tornadoes, we're doing two things in Kansas. We don't have earthquakes, we don't have. Hurricanes, we don't have all the yeah. Um, so that's, that's, whatever you remember. All, all the rules across the board. Um, like I say, while I'm based out of Great Bend, we're on the Arkansas River, Arkansas, you're right, it's always safe in Kansas. Um, so I deal with this all the time, uh. I deal with this out in Silverstone, Kansas, around the waters, you know, our Kansas river. Since I was a little bit of it. Um, but it's still on the floodline because it's, it's always possible that we can get that thousand year flood, but not. You know, cause damage. Um. The other thing that, and I, and I'm not an insurance agent, don't complain with me. But one thing that. About the national flood insurance. Requirement is. Your basement flood, it's not gonna cover, it's gonna pay for floor coverings, it's not gonna pay for drywall, it's not gonna pay for insulation. Only thing national flood insurance pays for is structural damage. Uh, water here, certainly Darren, they see this. Um. And that's just something that I always throw out there. Uh. Cause it's, it's not like a homeowner's insurance policy. So when I do one of these elevation certificates and find out that somebody is in the floodplain and. And they have to pay that insurance, I always recommend take out an insurance policy through your homeowners if there was flood. And then I oftentimes tell people that I can get removed. You're out of floodplain and you don't have to have national flood insurance. But it still might not be a bad idea to get a rider or whatever they call it on your homeowners in case you do. Well. Um. Because this is no guarantee that you're not. Um. That was good. Well, thank you.
Yeah, Darren, work with you, you did offer to do, um. It's called a public meeting if you wanted that and you, you know, Dustin, that's something to consider.
What, what I would recommend is because I am not a CFM, I would recommend that you contact Cheyenne Sun Eagle. That's what she does. She will travel around communities, meet or do town hall meetings or sit down. Uh, not necessarily in a council meeting, but you know, in a. Study session and bring a community or a county up to speed on, on what is required, show you all the forms that. That you need to fill out and that's the other thing, um. I've done a few of those for some real estate agents, but I'm really not qualified. To come in and do a presentation because I don't know everything about it. I miss league and something gets done and, you know, there's that five buildings. Like I said, I am not a CFM. Don't wanna be, I don't need to be through what I do, Darren.
Council, I mean, city of the district there. Or the city council, I closed in your package. It's three of the certs I have gotten towards my CFM with Cheyenne Sun Eagle. I know that she is one of my primary contacts. She is extremely helpful and I want to say very good morning.
Um, and I'll just throw out there, once again, I'm not trying to look for business and I'm not saying I'm charged. If anything ever comes up and you got a question about it, you can get it all. Um. I'm here to sort the problem. So.
Darren, maybe that's great.
Thank you, Darren.
Hey, next part of our agenda, the, the annual mayoral appointments. I think there's an attachment there. If Merton is okay with it, um, yeah, that would be different anyway. I think what we'll do is we'll go. Match a consistent proper protoc- protocol. We'll just go name by name and they say, yay. Name, yay, name, yay. And if there's a name, then we can kind of. Deal with it.
I guess I don't understand. Are you having to vote each?
Each one and doing it quick. Less verbiage.
As long as it's, that didn't have status, as long as it's clear how from both you can do that. Cause the question that was about it was verbiage and you can tap it back.
Okay. Also, is there? So how, what's, what's easier for you, man?
Like five, saying like we go on the housing authority?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, individually. All right, we need to do it one person at a time. All right, but everybody, um, for the annual mayoral. Over the city, Tom and Nora. Includes Chuck Useley, Alan Byerly and Leah.
Hi.
Lynn Cavendish.
Um, I will tell you that they all did a game for.
Okay.
Last four meetings, they all agreed to another.
Very good.
Didn't get it in writing to use.
No, thank you. All right, so we need a motion to approve the appointment of those three people. Make a motion to approve that. Use it. One with the three names again, Chuck Useley, Alan. One with the three names again, Chuck Useley, Alan Byerly, and Lynn Cavendish.
Cavendish. No, who else?
All second.
All right, Councilman, if there's made a motion, Councilor Coates has seconded that motion. Hearing not all, so favors to I. Yeah. If I have a library board, we'll only have one up, again, the, um, who she's done a name, so this is actually gonna be Mark Compton. It's not on there, but we do. There would be something later. And you can nominate him. Yeah, I'll go ahead and nominate Mark. My same right, Mark Compton, who's, um, faster, made that is third one, we have a library. Everybody want to make a motion to approve them? Instead of both.
Please.
Yeah.
We don't know if most of them want to fit in or not.
No, she's definitely.
Well, so Mayor, I'll make a, a motion to accept Mike.
Mark.
Mark Compton to replace Leslie Brooks on the library.
Second thing, Councilor Coates has made a motion to approve Mark Compton for the library board. Councilor Mark, the second motion, hearing not all, so favors to I. All right, for the Airport Advisory Board, um, it looks like Mike, it's Mike Olson to take place of who? On this, whoever expired.
Yeah, who expired Mark's time in the Maryam.
I mean, we're getting dealt.
There's this one.
Yeah. We can just. All right, once you look that up, Dustin, we'll move on to tours of the convention committee, um, we're going to approve. Look for Tracy and.
And you're in chat.
And we got Karen Urban, and what is they, and they're doing their expiration too, so.
Stacy, did you have anybody to call the vacancy?
I do not. And Dustin and I have this on the agenda for tomorrow, so I didn't know how many seats I was leaving to the bill.
You can pretend who's able to sign them?
Yeah. Just table it up. Public Building Commission, hey, I think Public Building Commission, we had Marion Horton, I mean, of course, that's.
Marion Horton is playing English, you know.
If you want.
That's playing English, she's playing.
Playing English. So again, all the buildings, excuse this. So, yeah, we'll do the playing commission, um, Marion Horton is wanting to get playing commission, so it's, you know, voting for him.
Mayor, I made a motion to have Marion Horton, it's Brian Paul.
So, Councilor Coates has made a motion to approve Marion Horton, replace Brian Paul on the playing commission. Councilor Mark has seconded that motion, hearing not all, so favors to I.
All right.
And then to that motion.
One, and then you're ready to.
Brian. Uh, or Marion Horton, they can see Brian.
Okay, so there, the vacancy, there's like two lines down, that's for the vacant mission.
We got one.
Okay, so I need to amend my motion?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I amend my motion to keep Brian Paul on the playing commission and move Marion Horton to the vacant seat on the playing mission.
All right, Councilor Coates has made a motion to keep Brian Paul on the playing commission, and to add Marion Horton to the playing commission edition. Councilor Mark has seconded that motion, hearing not all, so favors to I.
Should the, uh, city administrator, senior manager?
No, they're. They're, they're coming up with this.
I didn't see my. It's on the back on the information.
Yeah, it's in there. All right, I think, um, those don't need to be, this is us right here.
Who's this, right in the middle?
All right, so Ellsworth, it's substance, we've not been there, golf, we're. Um, Darren Holcheck, and Mickey Hayes, they both, they both said they want to renew Mr. Mayor. Up at the golf. So should we make a motion for Darren Holcheck and the man? Mickey Hayes adding Mickey Hayes.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to add Mickey Hayes to the golf course and renew Darren Holcheck and Anthony Hopkins' terms.
I'll second that. Counselor Coates has made a motion to add Mickey Hayes to the golf course and retain Darren Holcheck and the not listed for another term. Hearing not all, so favors to I.
All right.
Voted, all right, motion carried. The mayor and city council member, we're gonna deal with that, and we're moving on to the new list, too. Um, we'll do one at a time, Angela Mueller for Trevor. Make a motion to vote for her.
I'll make a motion, man.
Okay.
All right. Councilor Panda has made a motion, and Councilor Hanson has seconded that motion to continue with Angela Mueller for Trevor, uh, hearing not all, so favors to I.
All right.
Opposed, all right. Dylan Ben Brock, Building Inspector, lead a motion to approve them.
Go ahead, go ahead, Aaron.
Go ahead, Aaron.
All right. Counselor John, uh, Johnson has made a motion to approve Dylan, Ben Brock is Building Inspector, Councilor Hanson has seconded that motion, hearing not all, so favors to I. Closed, all right, motion carries. Ronnie Kendrick. Looking for him, all right, Councilor Panda has made a motion for him. Councilor Johnson has seconded that motion, hearing not all, so favors to I. All right, Patrick Hamel, the golf course superintendent.
I think I'm better than.
So Councilor, Councilor Hanson has made a motion to approve Patrick Hamel as the golf course superintendent. Councilor Coates has seconded that motion, hearing not all, so favors to I. Closed, motion carries. All right, recommended mayoral appointment, college positions, newspaper, uh, currently in the Ellsworth County Independent Reporter. A motion to continue that.
Sir Mayor, I'll make a motion to continue the Independent Reporter.
All right, Councilor Coates has made a motion to approve the independent reporter. Councilor Hanson has seconded the motion, hearing not all, so favors to I. The municipal court judge, uh, Peggy Swatting.
Make that motion.
All second.
All right, so, uh, Councilor Panda has made that motion, and Councilor Coates has seconded that motion, uh, for the municipal court judge, Peggy Swatting, hearing not all, so favors to I. Closed. All right, city attorney, I'm not gonna be making this appointment at this point in time, we'll not be voting on that. Uh, the depository, uh, currently it's the Citizen State Bank and Trust.
I'm making a motion to the Citizen State Bank and Trust.
All second.
We're not making a.
Uh, I, I, I think we need to have lots.
I would like to make a motion to add on an extra agenda item. The day of the election personnel.
Sure. All second. All right, for the depository, Citizen State Bank and Trust. I have a motion.
I'll make a motion for Citizen State Bank and Trust.
Okay.
All right, Councilor Bernard has made a motion for Citizen State Bank and Trust, Councilor Coates has seconded that motion, hearing not all, so favors to I. All right, I will not be making the, not, uh, the appointment for city administrator at this time. Uh, it looks like the following courts have, uh, let's just say, reappointed some vacancies that need to be addressed, or even just we did those, so, so that is for the appointments.
Okay, we've got a contract with Dustin for three years and you're not gonna make an appointment.
At this.
All five of us have voted to extend his contract.
We're here to start discussion.
Okay, I can make a motion that we, uh, continue to have Dustin as our city administrator and Patrick as our city attorney for the next three years.
Yeah, I think it'd be important.
I was starting that. If we vote for an improvement, you don't have to to check on this. Yeah, and it's been said in the.
But it's not something that they're still in their.
There's still, they're stuck in this. Just given this protest of your behavior, so let's do it. Oh, boy. I'm not gonna lose my temper, just saying.
It's just a lot of good discussions, all these investigations, all this stuff.
We're gonna get it. I think I'm gonna get it. I know. All five of us voted, and look at, I have a list of, I announced you several things over the last two weeks, so you haven't got a lot.
Yeah, I've got this, six things reviewed since the year.
My board had.
Okay.
So, we need to go out there. Hey, Council, at the beginning, we, we had a really good comment about working together.
Yes.
So please, I don't want anyone to say anything, I don't, don't, very confident in my life. I can't speak for Dustin.
No, I think it's all unfair, I mean, all agree that you're doing a wonderful.
Child, Patrick just said, I made that motion, I need a vote. Thank you, Patrick.
John, I, I appreciate what you're saying, but I feel like the motion and the vote is kind of, it's just overkill. It doesn't, it doesn't matter if you appoint them tonight or not, we're still retaining Patrick as our attorney, and we saw Dustin and kind of.
But we need to show support for those two being.
I, I feel like that we can show support like that, not.
Fair, let's go.
Still be collaborative and be a team and.
No, I think we're gonna get there, we're gonna get there.
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, we're gonna get there. I mean, I think we're gonna get there. And, and she just basically said she wasn't.
He didn't say that.
He said.
She did.
She's your.
Yeah, I said, she, I said.
They should be listening to her.
She said. Well, you don't listen to five of us.
Yeah. No.
You don't like.
Wait, wait, oh, oh.
All her voting on.
It's a, I really did.
So you're voting to continue to keep them even though there's nothing saying that not keeping them? Maybe, maybe you just need to say, like, I'm in support of Patrick and Dustin. I think that's the way that we need to.
I said, that's, that's.
Ceremony.
Now, again, we may read on our.
Ceremony, and like. All right, so Councilor Panda has made a ceremonial decision to support Patrick and uh, Dustin for three years, and Councilor Bernard has seconded that motion, any debate, any discussion? All right, hearing not all, so favors to I. Close, our motion carries. So the next thing on our agenda would be the police department heads. What is, no, I'm sorry. What went on?
About a community online, we're thinking.
Okay, spending your time for city employees.
Permission to speak.
Your head, yes, sir.
Um, and we had a comp policy a couple of years ago, that staff members have accumulated a lot of comp time, and we know that because it's a place of overtime required. So the question is, how do I get, how do I pay it out? According to my policy, with the new comp time cap sixty, I'm gonna go in much better because we if we manage it better, um, I am requesting councils dine in some way. I think it would be more advantageous to pay it all now. Clean the slate, it will be an expensive chunk, but it'll be more expensive than what. So, uh, it was something I wanted to bring to your attention because there's at least two staff members in track that real, a lot of comp time that's built up over their years of service.
Yeah. Thank you.
One of them is, I haven't talked to the other one yet, but I was wondering if I can have that tool at my disposal, because I'd like to wipe out all the previous comp time that I've had in the years. Just to clean the slate and start new. Execute new policies so that we have, we have the control, so we can work with the controls you are. Be the same, the policy.
So what, like.
It's basically just a couple of people, isn't it?
Yes, yeah.
Do you have any idea what the numbers are, like, I see the budget in fact, like, hence.
Yes.
I can read those sentence.
I know, I got, I would have to get those for you, I probably could have done a better job getting it, it was this concept, if you want, I can reintroduce it to you next council meeting, if that you want.
Did you just get it in the number?
Yes. It's however you want me to do.
I would say as long as both employees are hot or.
I think that's very fair, and they don't, they don't object to it.
And so then what you're saying is come January first through the end of next year, they can only, but you're like sixty.
That is correct. And I leave it up to the department, some department heads may not wanna use comp time as a tool, it's just an extra tool that the department has. Some, it's still overtime.
Correct. Let's give us a moment, all right?
So it, it is just a simple email, like to, you know, present it to your next council.
Yeah, it'll be fine.
Yeah, that's what you want.
All right.
So. This is now.
Oh, we need. Mr. Mayor, I am to approve the proposal for the expenditure of accumulating comp time for state employees as presented by the city administration. This motion is made in recognition of the need to address the challenges posed by significant comp time balances and to ensure compliance with the December thirty first deadline.
Councilor Coates has made a motion for comp time balance, corrections, Councilor Hanson has seconded that motion, any debate about this? All right, hearing not all, so favors to I.
All right.
Opposed, all right, motion carries. All right, now.
It's my, you know, you're gonna work for a minute.
We can do that, make a suggestion, like, wait two weeks, you guys are still, I already know, I'll donate my entire salary to them. And you can just blast me, that's cool. I'm not here for the money. They can leave you look bad.
It's a bargain.
He's, he's talking about pay, right? Uh huh, yeah, he's talking about my pay.
Oh, you're talking about.
Yes. So what I'm saying, give me two weeks, if you're like, yeah, we gotta do this, that's fine, you can laugh at me, but let me find, and I'm probably here to, as a senior center, I don't want to say tonight, hey, I'm gonna give it to them, I need to know, how do I do that? You know, how does Angela do that? Some of the mechanics, I'll, I'll say, all right, take my payroll, that's fine, you're not having my points, but let me, let me determine where they. Maybe that's a win-win. Otherwise, it's gonna seem as punishment, it's not, it's just, it's not punishment. There's, there's stuff that people who sit up here, you know, people out there don't know. Like, that's good, too. Now, look, look at these people laughing, you know why? Well, from what, enough to do it, I'm just saying. Don't know, be quiet.
Be quiet two weeks, but.
I'll, I'll, let me talk to them, if you're like, hey, lower his pay, that's fine, you know, with these reasons, but let me determine where they. Is that fair?
Two weeks.
Then two weeks?
Two weeks.
All right, on the police department, calls for service.
Right, so the April calls for service, slower month, uh, twelve hundred ninety-two RMS calls, then breakdowns attached. Yeah, question.
Thank you, thank you, I'm sorry. All right, fire calls for service, chief here, not here, okay, uh, city attorney, final comments.
No, thank you.
All right. City clerk, Manny. No. City administrator, Dustin.
No, thanks.
City council. Kyle, no. Dustin.
Uh, yeah. So Dustin, I was looking at this chapter two, I know, mayor and council on the codes and ordinances on the website.
Okay.
Page three of thirty-four. Council of American Duties, it's not that number May, on the recent election, you have to do, change it on the website.
Yes.
Thank you, oh. Hey, it's.
Did you get the, the change that I sent you? I forgot, when you bring that up, I could see some of it. Yeah, uh, cool, I, I, I just, I don't know, I will get it. All right.
That's right, I have to look and you know, but you also did bring it up. Also, I wanted to make a comment that Sexton of the Buckeye Cemetery is doing a fantastic job. Great, yeah, so.
That's awesome.
I, I might be biased, but I think he's, he wants to get more.
I. That was, when I, that guy was not, he's, that guy is struggling in the morning.
Yeah, well, he's, I think he's doing it bad, it's true.
If he didn't train, I don't.
I have no license, I guess, no. Maybe you could ask him. Uh, okay, somebody asked me to talk about ordinance six point zero, four point zero, nine, zero, regulating animals permitted in the. Um, here, apparently I'm the chicken person, but he basically asked me if people could have chickens in town, not only because of increasing cost of food, but also because they provide many benefits to the people keeping them as well as the community.
No.
I think the slot required one hundred and fifty, the minimum requirement should, should be abolished, and the five acre land be decreased to one acre, but the equipment should be a minimum of ten feet from the property line. And it goes on, and I, I told him, I promised him I'll bring it up, but I don't, that would be a no, so I just wanted to bring that up. But that would also go, I thought somebody was gonna say, listen, if you watch, you gotta speak then, right?
It's amazing what you can imagine.
Yeah. So no foul in city limits, are we agreeing?
Yeah. Just heard a word, I put on the interjection, according to that, if somebody, if I can still. Just heard, I would, I would interject, but according to, if somebody at my facility has a disability and they need a commercial, I'm required to let them. Follow state and look at loss, but yeah, it's weird.
Good to know.
It is weird.
And how would you make another point to say, bag your trash, pick up your dog food, we're gonna put that in the paper.
Right, take your trash, pick it up.
Yes, that is.
I think we're gonna move again this week.
Yeah, I did share that with some colleagues, and if you don't think, like, no, this should be a bigger thing, but if you're not thinking of your dog food, like, all of that species, like, runs into the, the water, I mean, it rains, and they're gonna get it from. So it ends up affecting our water quality, so, and even bigger than just being annoying, that walking in dog food, big dog. And, um.
Sorry, next person, Council John. Well, return my time to the Tuesday, okay, Council Man.
Yes, um, I want to put a shout out to Craig Dinkle, he's with extends his service, he did a beautiful job. In very, very nation in our state parks, especially one of the losing parks, so, I just like to show his representation where he's good and hard work.
And Artis Hoffman.
I do.
Artis Hoffman, she did, and you asked her gardener.
Okay.
Yeah.
I didn't realize that, so shout out, open.
Permission to speak, Mr. Mayor, um, and Don, I also wanted to reach out. Craig Dinkle also picked up, they were persistent plans, yes, made plans.
Okay, good. That's cool. Um, one idea that was brought up to me, I know it's in the flood, they were dealing with flood plains, but the twenty key, you know, we hear, is going to be closing, I believe in June. They have one that the city uses and the other downtown businesses using, is that something that we as a city may be interested in purchasing? But since it's in the flood plain, we'll maybe lend it to them because it's hardly a lot of cars that work. They're selling it, but I imagine they're gonna sell it, but it does come up, would that be something that we as a city might want to work? Downtown, because it's used here, it's used for all the businesses, and we can contact, I looked at it, we can contact the town. They do, they have the building on the corner with the chain link fence, and there's nothing in it, it's just waste, maybe they'll make that city in that little building, but you clean that all up, make that a beautiful lot.
It'd be good, they mentioned put a bubble bath in there.
Yes.
And then you can throw us a fit somewhere.
And as far as the whole building being in the flood plain, I don't understand that that would be that expensive of a building, because it's just enough shit to worth it. Yeah, where they, now, would any somebody want to.
Existing building would not be an issue, we just couldn't do any structural.
Okay, is that something that.
Yeah, add on, or if, if you guys know we should look into for the city.
Yeah. Yeah.
Some bathroom area, yeah.
If you can think of. Yeah, would you check into this with home lanes?
Okay, the, uh, I will, I will talk to Golden Plains about what there's something.
Yeah, and then, say, ask, at the lower yard. When Bobby Kep with the spark team, they were permitted to dig a burn in a burn trash pallet system like that, and now, I think it's a stadium on it. And, um, anyway, they wanna know if they are allowed to use that burn, and I guess it's a deep hit, to burn, or is the. Ellsworth Blumber up there on the edge of town.
Okay.
They asked me, and I said, I don't know if they were.
I think there's need for some EPA regulation.
Yes.
Possible.
Yeah, okay, so burn ban is by county, they would go through dispatch, and then we do buy to scurry around. So as long as we're not in burn ban, they contact Ralph, Ralph says it's okay to dispatch, they're about to burn it. Okay, so I have contact Ralph.
Well, that's one part, but when we did all the burning and all the excess, we had in the last windstorm, uh, last year, we had to get an EPA permit to burn a mess, so I think there's still certain conditions. I think for simple burn stuff, yes, but if it's a mess, fine, I think there's additional regulations I have to look into.
They wouldn't be chicks, is, and then, and did you have a chick, was it Ronnie or anybody else, like, oh, at the.
Yes, he's getting it painted, that's why this was like, oh, because once he gets it painted, he'll put a flashlight.
Sam, right.
Then he needed, uh, what he told me, he said he needed to get rid of, he needed to make a range of fire trucks.
Okay. And that's all I have, okay.
I'm gonna move on things. So, um, are we still maintaining the hospital property, sorry, it's grass?
No, we, uh, we generally contact the owner. Last year, last year, we contacted. Have we contacted eighteen eighty-six investments this year?
Uh, last time I had to contact people that were, what, were them, and they did, they were not going to be using their services.
It's getting very hot.
Yeah.
I appreciate that.
Thank you.
And I do have one more thing at our last meeting, I do want to apologize for a few of the, like, type of language that I did say, it wasn't very professional, but it was in the heat of the moment, I do want to apologize for that. But it didn't change the facts that we were given, so, thank you. Garcia.
Yeah, I knew, um, we were all elected on this tour, to work as a team, and I would say this last four months have been the biggest disaster for the last four years. It has been eight of them, and people, yes, and people in the city have noticed, and I have school kids in here watching people argue, we call each other names, adultment, call each other names, and they think it's fun, they thought that was fun. Don't think they didn't go to school and tell their friends that, oh, you shouldn't have left, because it was a, it was a show. Like each other, don't like each other, we were all supposed to be a team, and right now, there is no team, there is part of the team, you are not trying to be part of ours. You're not.
That's a nice theory.
No, you can speak, I'm just speaking, I, I talked to several people, they talked about. What this looks like to the public, and it looks ridiculous.
It's bad, if you can't, there's no way the public can see us, sick, she looks great, he looks terrible.
I'd say, yes.
We did, and then we got all together, pulled together.
Together, and right now, that's not happening.
We saw it, we saw the beginnings.
We, maybe, but then emails come through and things happen, and then not. Not, and if you're saying to the public, no, just honest.
Something, but they, it's terrible, but I'm gonna have to say that, when you get sick, right, you feel nauseous.
That's not, it's not cheating anymore.
But right, wait, but then you grow up, right? You feel better, I think in the next couple of weeks, we're in a, in a really bad place, and I think we're gonna get this.
Like we are, I don't want to, I feel like, all right, I told my boss, I told him, I don't have the anxiety Friday to come to these meetings on the day night. That should not be, we are here to make this city better, we are not here to tear, and right now, we're tearing apart.
It's tough stuff, I mean, I think we talked a lot of you about it, you know, it's kind of this evil law just rolling into the city of Ellsworth, and it's like. You don't, we, we don't know what to do, we did the best we could, but I think we could have done worse, I do, I think that other teams would have done worse. We were.
Like, we were fine in December.
I mean, I think.
In December, and in twenty twenty-four, then.
It's just, that's, we, we've had a lot of factors, we really have, we've had a counselor change, we've got a new attorney, there are a lot of different things that kind of added to.
Right, an attorney that you appointed, that you thought was doing a good job.
Right, and a lot happened last four months, my views are just different.
The best change, the best time getting along.
We're gonna get there, we're gonna get there.
Yeah, you're, you're.
Well, you've got to do, you've got, you've got to compromise too.
Well, yes, okay, we're gonna compromise, but really, yes, if you interest the city people, tell them what you said at the school and supply them about.
I don't remember what I said, oh, that's, here's what I said.
No.
It's what that, you, you, you stab people in the back.
No.
That's what we're not.
Says, uh.
Me. That's what we're not gonna do.
Right.
Then four, you can talk like this, have a negative session on, answer.
If Warren wins the field, they're there.
This is ridiculous, this is ridiculously ridiculous, have a negative session, if you need to say things like this, do it behind closed doors.
Yeah.
Yeah, go, you can hear it, you can go.
Out on the street, what is next to going on, I tell you exactly what's going on.
I, I think we're gonna get better, I believe you, um.
I disagree very much. You haven't changed anything tonight, you're still acting like a child.
Who's acting like a child?
You.
I'm not reading all night, I have a. But anyway.
Thank you, Mary.
Mary, go ahead.
Start, I started up in January, correct, what changed in January? Think about that, let's move on.
Yes.
All right, so, final comments, actually, Dorothy, you're now.
Okay. I think before we start on.
Yeah, I mean, clearly, we've got to come together, it's a poor reflection on us, poor reflection in the city, but I still think, you know, I talked to different people about it, you know, we've through a very difficult time. And you don't trust, and you don't, you know, you don't do anything, uh, like you normally would, so I think that, you know, my, my family's gonna take a nice vacation this summer, and I think there's some positive things coming. You know, we're like this in October, November, clearly, we've got to make some changes, I just don't think we will be, um, I think we hit a really rough spot. This is very different from the cyber attack, that was another rough spot that it felt, that felt very different, it was like two or three people behind the scenes, this included everybody, so it's been really hard. Um, I think if we keep collaborating and working together, we could be a great team, I mean, we, we're, we're gonna continue to have some problems here or there, but I mean, I, we can still produce for the city, I don't think that's gonna be the case, so, I'm willing to do it, um. You know, I've got to do a better job, sure, I mean, I, I, you know, Dorothy sent me some email, and it was really interesting, I reflected, and I said, I can't respond to that email until I fully understand what she's saying, she, she compared me to her dad, who's a wonderful mayor, and. I can't be him, I, I'm never gonna be him, I don't have some of those personality traits, I don't have just certain, he was a wonderful man, you know? I'm more of a fighter, I'm probably, you know, I've just got a different style, so I've got to learn how to contain that and use it in the right way, and I think I'm willing to do. And, um, hopefully, my coworkers will see that as an asset, in certain situations, I think Mr. Rainey did, you know, we had a great collaborative relationship and really created a friendship by us, so I think we've got to kind of look for those ways that we. We kind of agree, and then kind of build on that, and we're, we're still gonna disagree, we're still gonna have problems, there's no doubt, but they can't be every two weeks, you know, we've got, like, like Dorothy said, we can't have anxiety, and, you know, this kind of thing, we come to work, but I just think it's gonna get better, I'm willing to try, so. But anyway, that's all I needed to say, and we can go to your.
Sir Mayor, I make a motion to a during the meeting.
All right, Counselor Coates has made a motion during the meeting. Council Panter has seconded that motion, Mary Nellows, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?